The time of year when all of the people that you've elected at town meeting to represent you get together and talk about every single dollar that's going to be spent in the upcoming year in Milford. So tonight, as always, we're going to go through all the articles. It's $102 million that is being proposed to be spent, so we all believe that you should know how we're spending your money. Why don't we start with introductions?
I'm Bill Buckley. I'm a member, or I'm the chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Chris Moore, a member of the FinCom.
Mike Sores, a member of the FinCom.
And vice-chair of the FinCom.
Yep.
Bill, question came up, you suggested it, and I think it's a great idea, is how do articles, I mean, the big question everybody says is, how come by the time articles get to town meeting, 38 out of 40 always fly through? And they don't realize how much discussion has gone on and all, you know, the vetting process, how painful it is. But fundamental question that I don't think we've ever addressed is, how do I get an article and who can put an article-
Right.
-on the annual warrant?
What the articles should be is a collection of different department heads. Different department heads bringing forth what their expectations for expenditures are. Now, that's at a very high level. At the end of the day, I think that the budget creation and those articles should be a reflection of the values of a community, what's important to a community, and what they prioritize. So I think what you see when you see annual town meetings, and certainly in October when you see the capital projects, you see prioritization from department heads saying, this is what we need to do, this is why we need to do it. And hopefully, the elected officials and the department heads are representative of the greater citizenry, and those values are aligned with what's important to the community.
But there are some articles that aren't sponsored by department heads, or selectmen, or school committee.
Yeah, very rarely. So what somebody can do to propose an article is frankly, get 10 signatures. And if they get signatures by, from Milford residents, what they're able to do is propose an article. Now, Board of Selectmen vote on that, whether they pursue that article or not, but still, articles are generally and always brought forward to town meeting. And they rise and fall, and are defeated or approved based on what the citizens of Milford and the precinct members have decided.
I mean, years ago, we had a resident who said, "I'd like to propose a sidewalk." And it was a $2 million project, kind of surprised everybody, but they got to bring it to town meeting floor.
Sure, that's the beauty of it.
Yes. I mean, the selectmen were against it, the FinCom, when we evaluated it, we didn't see the merits of it over some of the other projects.
Sure.
But if a resident of Milford truly wants something to be discussed, it will be discussed.
And you bring up a very important point, and I get it all the time, and I know everyone here gets it, is that the people have a real issue with the fact that we spend $100 million like that, or so they think. The work that's done for budgeting for all these articles is so extensive, as Bill alluded to, between department heads' meetings and everything else. We hash this stuff out over months. Certainly, nothing is decided willy-nilly with a rubber stamp at town meeting. So that's why it's important for people to know when they see us vote so quickly at town meeting, or it goes unanimous, or at any of our committee meetings. The due diligence that's been done ahead of time to be able to get to that point is essential.
No, I mean, case in point, we're starting the capital articles for the fall two months ago. And we're already bringing people back as we go through what we believe could be on the docket for October. You know, so it's not wait till September and go through it.
And it's due diligence by the department heads prior to ever bringing it forward to FinCom. Then there's due diligence once again in third-party objective review.
Sure. They've got to go through the selectmen in many cases, they have to go through the FinCom. So you've got the department itself, the selectman review, the FinCom review, and then sort of, you know, a few times, it's kind of like Congress, where House and Senate vary a bit. You know, we'll go through one of the articles that, you know, you took it on yourself to keep from having a controversy. You know, so-
Right.
Off we went. Okay, Article number one out of 39, reports of town offices, officers. Basically, every year, if somebody like FinCom or a capital committee wants to give a report, this gives them the ability to get up in front of town meeting, give their report. Article number two, this is always an interesting one, the wage and salary schedule.
On a normal year, this usually is one of those rubber stamps where we approve it. Usually, there's a cost of living adjustment for those two people, and usually, this goes rather quickly. This year, it's going to be a little bit different. The Personnel Board has been working for about 18 months on an adjustment to Article two, and how we classify our positions and how we pay them. They've done what I would consider a very lengthy report, like I said, 18 months worth. It was on the last town meeting, and it was passed over, and they're back again. They've given extensive reports to the selectmen, to the FinCom, on what they were trying to achieve. If you're going to try to get me to explain to you what they're trying to achieve, that's where you're going to have a problem, because there seems to be quite a bit of confusion on what exactly they were trying to both cure and what their remedy was going to be. The selectmen last year were very good point of saying that the study needed to be expanded, it wasn't studying the right towns. They went and expanded it to three more towns that were closer to Milford, still not even close to what it should have been, it should have been a lot more than three. So the FinCom, in our report, we have an unfavorable ruling, it was unanimous on that, because we just felt that, first, we didn't understand what it was trying to cure, and secondly, it just could not be easily explained both to us, and then for us to try to explain it to other people. So we had a unanimous unfavorable ruling.
Originally, the town meeting report went out, we hadn't voted on it, but subsequent, we had a second meeting. And I think the confusion that kept coming up was, the week before, it got changed, and we were told, next Saturday, we're going to change it again. So it was hard for the FinCom to vote on something that, one, was very difficult to understand, but, two, we were already told it's going to change.
Right, it wasn't ready.
I don't know, how did the selectmen go on this one?
The selectmen listened to it, and as Chris said, the first year we got it, you know, we had some recommendations for change. You know, I think in part, I think the challenge for this article is how the Personnel Board presents it. I think ultimately, they've got to decide how to make it concise, clear, and crisp, without getting into too much of the background. You know, at a very high level, it's taking steps from five to eight, at a very high level. But there's much more involved than just that, and I think it's incumbent upon the article owners to, you know, present it in a way that folks can digest it.
And I think that was the problem most of the FinCom members had, is it wasn't we were really against it. We didn't know what problem you're trying to fix, and then how does this fix the problem? Because initially, we were told that it went over less than favorable with the employees, but then it was changed, so it was going to be more favorable, but nobody had the time. It just seemed too many variables were up in the air.
There's no question, and when you look at what, to me, is a real test, is basically your applications for your openings and your retention. And in both those areas, I think Milford is doing a very good job. Our employees tend to stay for quite a long time, and for our job openings, we get quite a few applications.
We do have qualified.
So, oh, exactly, they're qualified. So to me, when you see those two things, I just don't see a problem. So, but like Bill says, it really is going to come down to how the Personnel Board delivers it.
Well, they came with the objective that they wanted to check the market and come up with a market analysis, which is great, and I totally agree with. But then they went on to change the structure of how we pay employees and how they get raises, and that's where the confusion lies, because when we did the market analysis, we found that we were paying competitively. It didn't seem like we needed to have any change in the structure and the way we pay our employees.
Again, as Bill says, presentation. The way it was presented, like you say, we typically do salary bands to attract and retain qualified people. When that's not a problem, and then they tell us that the survey said we're competitively positioned, except in a couple special cases, it's confusing.
And what shouldn't be lost in discussion, they're hard-working volunteers trying to put this together, right? And, you know, at the end of the day, one of the biggest benefits that the community got, municipality got rewritten, had rewritten job descriptions-
Job descriptions.
-for every position, so-
No, our hats are off, because we know that-
It was a lot of work, and that's enormously helpful.
Their volunteer efforts are saving us over $100,000 a year.
Right.
Because we don't need a head of HR, because they're doing it.
Wow.
So, okay, number three, fix the million-dollar salaries for the elected officials.
Yeah. So Article three basically goes through a number of positions, town clerk, tax collector, assessor, highway surveyor, and a bunch of others. Many of these are positions that they serve as commissioners, or planning board members, whatnot. And the vast majority of those positions are recommended 1% increases. There are two exceptions where, I'm sorry, three exceptions where, you know, two positions are at 2% raises and one is at 1.1.
Right.
So, not exorbitant, and so-
We recommended a 20% increase for FinCom members.
At least.
Yeah.
So 20% times zero, we can support that. Now, Article four, that's basically giving the selectmen the right to raise the money we need to meet our budget.
Right, set the tax rate.
Set the tax rate.
Right, that's essentially what they do.
And that's always the hard one, because we know we benefit tremendously as residents from the dual tax rate. But you can't make it, I mean, you've got a heck of a responsibility, you can't make it so onerous that you chase the businesses out of town.
No, so you're right, and, you know, without the businesses, we don't have, we don't have taxation at the levels we need, and then the full burden falls on the residents. So, you know, it's really not, and I'll tell you my impression of this, it's not setting the tax rate. Town meeting essentially sets the tax rate by expenditure.
Right.
Right, when town meeting is done voting on every appropriation, the tax rate is a piece of that formula, right? At the end of the day, we have to cover those costs, and we cover those costs in a couple of ways. Through evaluation of property, and what the valuation is aligned with what the offset is, right? How much of the burden is then going to shift to residents or businesses? And so it's really setting that offset.
And a lot of times, people will get upset at the selectmen, because they'll say, "We heard the levy, the total amount, only went up 2%. Why did my house go up 6%?" And they don't understand that it's really the tax assessor that's setting the baseline number to say, if private homes went up 8% in value and commercial went down, well, you just kind of set some boundaries that you've got to live in.
Right.
We always see that every, condos go up, X amount of apartments go up, houses, zones, there's so much variance.
Multi-families go down.
Single families go down, yes, certain people do.
And we do tend to forget when the residential single families didn't go up or went down. But boy, we remember when the single families jumped up 4%, 5%.
Sure.
We look at Article six, just gives the selectmen the right or the obligation to take on whatever legal proceedings they need.
Yeah, periodically, the town will negotiate for sale of property, for a variety of different things. We may even be subject to a claim, a legal proceeding, where somebody claims that through some either negligence or whatever, that a sidewalk or town road caused an issue, and so this authorizes the Board of Selectmen to negotiate with insurance companies, individuals, attorneys.
Otherwise, we'd have to have a town meeting every other week-
Right, right.
-to deal with it.
Yep.
Seven, parking violations. Again, just, you can spend the money we raise on parking fines.
Right.
Or parking fees.
It allows the parking fines to be used consistent with parking regulations and the discretion of the Board of Selectmen.
Article eight, the Paul Revere article, compensating balances. I think back when Paul Revere was around, we were worried that the treasurer may have to go and do a deal with the banks for money. Luckily, I don't think that Article eight's ever been used in my memory, and as long as town meeting keeps our spending within control, we may never have to cut any special deals in the middle of the year with the banks.
Right.
Article nine, again, to me, this is giving the selectmen the ability to deal with insurance.
Right, so an example that comes up frequently is, a truck will go through town and basically take a corner too tight and wipe out a light pole or a traffic signal. This allows us to take those funds received from an insurance company-
And fix it.
-make the claim and fix it, without further appropriation.
And I think it happened fairly recently. Two years ago, we had a truck, a highway truck go on fire, and we used the funds from the insurance to go ahead and grab another truck.
Yep. Ten, contracts.
It allows us with the guidance of state statutes to enter into contracts for, there's probably, I think, five or six positions where it allows us to enter into contracts. They can be police chief, buyer chief, finance director, treasurer, or executive positions.
There's a number of them, there's boundaries that you stay within.
Right.
You're not going to do a 20-year contract with somebody.
You can only do a five-year contract, except for real estate, which you can do 10.
Right.
And you know, and there are certain things you can achieve with multi-year contracts, like you guys have done with the electrical companies, something that, when you can offer them, you know, that we're going to be in this for more years, I mean, you get better return on some of your stuff. So for the selectmen to be able to have that ability, I really think it benefits the town, so.
Eleven, we talk about exemptions for real estate.
I mean, yeah, this is an article every year that allows for 100% exemption for senior citizens, and I believe the blind, too.
That's correct.
And veterans.
And veterans, thank you.
Yeah.
You know, so I believe this is an annual article that we have to do, take up every year, and I think it's for a good cause, so, helping those that need it the most.
People should know, I think, last few years, it's cost us, like, what, $47,000?
And I bring it up every year, because people still say to me, "Well, why don't I get a benefit?" These people, because of what they have, whether they're a veteran or ability, they deserve this. And on top of that, they prefer services for the town. So, I mean, they're not getting this for free, whether they're doing things at town hall, or they're falling behind the trash truck to make sure people recycle, I don't know, but they're doing things, you know, for this benefit, so.
Article 12 talks about taking land in lieu of foreclosure.
What it allows us to do is process where somebody's fallen behind or wanted to walk away from a property. It allows us to enter into a tax title or tax lien and settle that tax lien if the owners want to do it in lieu of foreclosure.
Well, the other option is to go spend a fortune in legal procedures.
Right.
You know, and how many times we've had a little triangle of land that's worth next to nothing?
Right.
And to have to go do all the documents and, you know, just perform the due diligence to foreclose, just makes no sense. This way, if somebody wants to hand us the land, we're done, thank you very much.
Right, or the other option is to come up with the money that the taxes are owed, right? So those are the choices that the owner has.
That would be, I mean, that would be the optimum.
Right.
We'd rather not take the land-
Right.
...and just take what is a fair market.
Yeah, because the town's not in the business to own land.
Right.
No.
Article 13.
Potato chip money.
Potato chip money. I mean, that's a reoccurring article every year, that the money that's spent at the high school or at the schools, buying chips, or now it's healthy food and healthy drinks.
Healthy snacks.
Snacks and granola.
Snacks and water.
Is given back to the school to use for student activities.
Right, Student Activity Fund.
Item 14, revolving funds.
There are several departments in town that raise money at different points in time, and having a revolving fund gives these departments the ability to both collect money and spend money during the year in order to, you know, just conduct their business. Like the youth center is a revolving fund, well, it is now, and we'll see what it is in the future, but, you know, in which they collect money from both rentals, camps, that type of stuff. And this revolving fund gives us the ability to then go ahead and just spend that money however they choose.
Overdue books, I think, is a library is another example.
Yep.
They get to spend the funds.
And again, this is something where every year, they have to square it up.
Mm-hmm.
It's usually, I mean, the youth center is probably the biggest one.
Yeah, I think it is.
Because of the big summer camp, but most of the time, it's not huge money.
Right, it's audited.
It's audited.
It's reviewed.
We look at it every year to say, is it the right amount? Because years passed, we reduced the revolving accounts when we didn't need as much. Okay, if we look at 15, Mass Electric.
15 is-
Front, no, front stairs.
Front stairs.
Yeah, so, you know, the-
Oh, you're right.
The police chief with review from facilities manager and others have deemed not only the handrails falling off and some of the walkway going to the police station, but it's a safety issue. We have to be able to allow the public to get in and out of that building safely, so it's a high priority, and we need to bring it forward.
And we should note, this is one of those capital items that we're doing in the spring, because it falls under the two that the FinCom, we say either an emergency or special circumstances. So here, when it's a safety issue, and the chief has said that people are having a hard time tripping over the-
Yeah, it's New England, right? It's frost and whatnot.
Frost and heaves and things move.
Does things to concrete. Unfortunately, it does it at our homes as well.
16, we're talking about doing away with the Capital Improvement Committee.
Yeah, this is an article brought forward by the Board of Selectmen. It was raised a few years ago, and I think, I think with the, what the FinCom's doing with capital, and its five-year capital plan and rotating capital plan, I think it's a perfect opportunity to look at that. I think over time, the FinCom, I mean, the Capital Improvement Committee has struggled to get things out in a timely manner, has struggled to align with FinCom or anybody else, frankly. So we just think, I think the Board of Selectmen thought this is a great opportunity. I remember last year, and it's happened repeatedly, that, you know, Capital Improvement Committee people were scrambling, you know, choking the copier downstairs five minutes before a meeting. And frankly, if things are just placed on the chairs of town meeting members just before the meeting, it's not enough time for folks to digest it, understand it, and really consider what's been done. So I think, I don't know that it's fair to the Capital Improvement Committee, and I think with the FinCom's efforts, I think it's, with regard to capital, it's really helped and filled that void, so this is the direction the Board wanted to go.
And up until now, all of these articles have been favorable from the FinCom, because these are reoccurring every year.
Except for Article two.
Except for Article two. But from three on, they've all been favorable. We get to Article 17, and the FinCom, when it talked about the commission of disability definition, that was not an article that really came under the FinCom, so we voted to refer to sponsor.
Sure.
Does anybody want to talk about 17?
Well, I just think it allows, I think its intention is to ensure that some population of the members of the Commission on Disability are handicapped themselves, or caregivers for people that have handicaps. What it does is it makes sure that a certain perspective, skill, and expertise is a function of that Board to give it that perspective.
And this kind of loosened that up, because up until this article, if it passes, you had to be designated handicapped, was my understanding. This says-
I don't know.
If-
Yeah, this article broadens it a bit.
The way it was explained, it said, "It broadened it, because if you're a knowledgeable person that can help-"
Right.
"-you don't necessarily have to have 100% handicapped."
Right. There was, before, there was certain amount of members who had to have a disability. Now, they've broadened the definition so that people who assist people with disabilities can join that disability committee, so that, you know, they also have-
So if you're knowledgeable, if you can make an impact, the selectmen, I guess, would be the appointing authority on this?
We are.
You could take somebody who you say, "Wow, this could be a real help to the Disability Commission."
Sure.
It doesn't have to be disabled.
Right.
But obviously, as Bill says, we started out saying, "Everybody is." Now we're loosening it a little bit, and we'll see how it works, and the selectmen will decide. We roll to 18, I dare say it's almost a housekeeping issue, it's a budget issue of adding money in to balance the finance director's position.
Yeah, so, you know, it wasn't that long ago that we decided to create the position of finance director. And what that says is essentially that finance director looks over everything as it relates to finance, and is a single point of contact for everything, including treasurer collections and any of the associated work that goes on within the treasurer's office. With that, there's a tremendous amount of responsibility. The Board of Selectmen sat and negotiated and came up with a compensation scheme that adjusts for that extra work and extra responsibility.
You expanded a person's role-
Right.
-and you're just compensating-
And responsibilities.
And responsibilities. And I'll tell you what, my hat's off to you picking Zach.
Yeah, he's a good guy.
He has been such a breath of fresh air. He knows what he's talking about. When he promises us things, he actually gets them done, which is very nice, you know? And he has got a sense of humor when we beat the poop out of him all the time.
Yep.
You know, because you're beating him up privately, we're beating him up privately, and he keeps a sense of humor on it and comes back. And when he tells you, "That's it," we really know.
That's it.
We've pushed it.
Right.
You're not going to get any more. So that's been a great hire.
And the whole reorganization of that organizational chart, I think, has been a great success, of having moved him in there and having one person, as Bill says, as that's your point of contact. He is going to oversee everything, and then you know exactly where you need to go, and it's not a question of who's covering it.
He's also responsible for IT, the new IT position and that leadership, so there's a lot of responsibility there. Of course, he uses all the enterprise software, he's responsible for payroll, he has, he's the one that loses sleep if those systems go down, so.
At the end of the day-
He now has responsibility and authority over-
He's doing it, I mean, again, I tip my hat to you all, because you gave him the responsibility, but you also have given him the ability, the authorization, to carry it out.
Yeah.
And too many times, you see people being given the responsibility-
And no authority.
-no authority to do it.
Yeah.
We roll into number 19, the Luisa Lake.
Yeah, this is great money to spend. I hate spending money, but if I'm spending money to save money later on, that's great. So this is $150,000 that we're going to be spending to work on the Luisa Lake dam repairs. Basically, this will, spending $150,000 now and maybe spending $150,000 three years from now should allow us to forego about $600,000 in total expenses to rebuild the dam and revitalize it. So I think this is money well spent.
And even if we did spend it next year, it's still 300-
Versus the 600.
Not the 600. You know, and again, hats off to Scotty, because he went out and just didn't take the advice of the first, you know, person he heard. He got people from Milford involved and got his own people doing the work, and all of a sudden, we go from a $600,000 estimate to maybe 300.
Yeah, and this isn't work that's frivolous. I mean, the state's highly focused on dam and dam safety, and they come out, they inspect dams, they look at dams, they rate them, and they tell you that you're going to need some attention, and if we don't start doing this work, there's a bill coming due anyway. Question is, how much avoidance can we do by doing it with our own municipal highway-
If we didn't, we'd probably have $600,000 coming sooner or later. Now we're going to have 250 to 300.
Yeah, I think the second estimate was around the 250 range.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that involved us doing a lot internally, using highway department and all. Okay, Bill, can you, here's the $64 question. Can you summarize Article 21 on signs in 30 seconds or less?
Sure. I'll summarize it in this way. The Supreme Court has ruled that you can't regulate content, and you have to be unbiased in your approach to sign regulation, so that it doesn't favor content over one group or another. That means if somebody wanted to, if the theater group wanted to put a production together, their ability to notify the community that that presentation is coming due and is, you know, going to be shown is the same as anybody else who wanted, for lawful purposes, put up signs that communicated some content or subject. And the Supreme Court said, "The municipalities can't be in the business of regulating that content, it has to be content neutral." This has to do a lot with how to manage that process.
Simple.
Simple, but in six pages.
Six pages.
I mean-
But we won't be chasing after veterans on their firewood signs anymore.
One would hope, one would hope.
Okay, we roll now to senior center bathroom, and I'll take that one, because-
Go ahead.
That one is something that we had budgeted for the fall. We went back to the Selectmen when it came up in the spring and said, is it an emergency or is it special? And Bill, hats off to you because you said, you know, actually, we don't want to open up a door of saying we're going to do something that isn't an emergency, isn't special. And you went and took care of it on maintenance budget.
Yeah, through, through transfers within the Maintenance Department, we're able to fund now what was an estimated eighty-one hundred dollars expense for something that was already planned in a buildup.
Right.
To add the fixtures for a bathroom. It was already roughed, it was already ready to go. It's in the Senior Center upstairs. There are already bathrooms there. But what we're finding is, as a result of the number of people who are showing up at our Senior Center, thankfully, the number of card players, the number of fitness classes that are held, those, that bathroom is oversubscribed, and we actually need more bathroom space.
And again, I think the biggest thing was you recognized that this would cause an issue for the FinCom. Because you can't be telling some people, hey, we follow the rules because we had Scotty asking for a truck and it wasn't an emergency, it was, we had other people asking and we pushed them off to fall, and you took care of it.
Yeah, for me, it was very simple. It, it was not a matter that I wanted to draw a line in the sand and make anything a matter of honor. It was something that needed to be done. People now are moving their recreation activity upstairs, downstairs because there's not enough bathroom space. What we want to do is make sure that what we had planned, what was roughed out, now gets built. And we're talking about at, on the high side, eighty-one hundred dollars. I understand one of the quotes came in at sixty-four hundred dollars.
Well, but again...
And the person, the last person who did the work, which we're very satisfied, came in with the lowest bid.
But again, it's all about one group, Selectmen, saying if we do this, it'll cause problems for another group.
It's not worth it.
We want to work together.
Right.
And you fixed it.
By some goodwill and do it within the budget.
Now we roll to twenty-three, the bus.
The bus.
Lot of discussion on the bus.
Lot of discussion on the bus. And I think we should understand that from a FinCom perspective, our obligation, our scope is to vote positive, you know, favorable, unfavorable, on the article being presented. Because there were questions of could we take up alternate proposals? And the answer was no, it's not in our scope. But why don't you talk, Bill, you're probably one of the most knowledgeable about the bus.
Well, the, the Board of Selectmen, over the years, has been invited to be a part of the Metro West Regional Transport Authority. We had not been a part of it for a number of years. I know for most of my time on the Board, and that's now coming to eleven years, we had not been a member of that. But a couple of years ago, we joined the MWRTA. People may know that we receive bus service already from the MWRTA. It comes in once in the morning and leaves once in the evening. It's primarily to benefit Holliston residents who want to come into this community, shop or go to the hospital, seek healthcare services. But it has a side benefit that also gets people from Milford into the MWRTA system should they want to go to Framingham. But the problem with that service is it's twice a day. We believe, the Board of Selectmen have voted unanimously to support an article to join the MWRTA. That, that current article is now at a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the first year in a pilot program. We want to know how it's going to run. Our best estimates, when we look at other communities, when we look at ridership in other communities, which is, you know, frankly, the only way I know of understanding how, how much participation there may be in addition to going out with, to the stakeholders. We meet with the hospital, we meet with the Veterans Agent. We seek counsel from the Senior Center, Sue. We talk with the Library Director and say, how might this benefit you? Where do you see the ridership? How might veterans get services at the VA in Boston? And how many riders do you think that is? And that all comes together to be an estimated thirty thousand riders over the course of a year. Now, there's no way in my mind that that ridership will be thirty thousand in the first year because starting off, there's certainly an effort that it would take for outreach and educate a community on what this, what this can do, how that people can get from one point to another.
But the discussion we had, Bill, if I remember, was really about a run rate. That the first three months of any program, you're barely going to get off the ground.
Yeah.
But at the end of the year, if you had twenty-five hundred riders twelve months in...
Right.
That is a thirty thousand person.
Something is, yeah, that's, well, I mean, if you have twenty-five hundred versus the, the thirty thousand projected, and I see thirty thousand as a third-year number, but, and should it go for three years? Because one of the things that's important to understand is no bus service can come to Milford at any time without annual.
Right. But what I mean by twenty-five hundred is that run rate, say, month twelve, twenty-five hundred people comes out to about twenty-six, twenty-seven thousand.
Yeah, that would be phenomenal.
That'd be, but, you know, when you said you're going to have criteria, I'm on camera when I said, yeah, to me, there's three criteria. Ridership, ridership, ridership. If this helps, this interloop helps the citizens of Milford, then it's worth doing.
Yeah, and in my view, you know, too many people, I think, want to apply, you know, concepts related to spreadsheet analysis for bus service. I, I don't think this is one of those things you can apply those to. And when we talk about community, what makes a great community is their ability to interconnect. What, what, you know, in my mind, it, it means also taking care of those who may be less fortunate and may not always have cars. Because if you and I judged it, or any one of us judged it, we would say, hey, I might not ride that. I have a car, I have two cars, you know?
Bill, isn't it like the Senior Center, the Youth Center?
Sure.
If you ran a P and L on the Senior Center...
It would never work.
It's a total loser.
It's a subsidy.
But you sit there and say, wait a minute, it's one of the best things that we do for our seniors. So we don't do a P and L on it.
Yeah, I, I think one of the biggest benefits, if we talk about, you know, the individual stakeholder groups that may benefit from it, we're most certainly talking about handicap people, we're most certainly talking about elderly people. But I also think we're talking about the youth of the community who want to work. Their parents may not be home in time to get them to work. They may be able to take that bus. They may simply want to, you know, I know as a young person, you know, I lived on military bases. I was dependent upon public transportation to get me from one base to another to go see a sporting event. And so there may be occasions where young people can go to a sporting event early, a football game or otherwise, and have their parents pick them up later. So young people, elderly, veterans, disabled are most certainly going to benefit.
And at the end, we have a group in Milford, citizens from Milford, who believe we're moving too quickly, that we don't have all the details that should be passed over to the fall. So I guess at the end of this, it's going to come down to a town meeting, presentation.
Well, it'd be a presentation, and I think, you know, I think at the end of the day, it's really the, town meeting is really the perfect public hearing for it. Because, you know, you get to say, you know, what type of community you want. Is this something you think that will benefit the community? And, and make decisions based on that.
So we'll see how it goes from there.
There's no question. And, and as Bill mentioned, and I think it, to me, it is the most important point of the whole thing, is that this can be stopped at any time. We're not signing up for twenty years of a bus service.
No, it's one year.
So we're going to evaluate what we have. And to me, because I do believe that there are other alternatives that I even have. But my point is, we can get it going with the MWRTA, and in the next year, if someone comes up with an alternative, maybe we start that in year two. But the point is, I have been sold that there is a need for this. I believe that we need to provide this to the citizens of our town. And in the meantime, we can still be looking at alternatives and still have them.
And the Chairman of the Selectmen promised us that we would get a real analytical look every ninety days. So it's not like we're shooting in the blind and we won't hear anything. And we all know, the first ninety days, you can't expect it to be hopefully at a two thousand, twenty-five hundred rate.
Right, and, and you know, one of the things that, you know, I've been cautious of in who we engage with, it, it just can't be any transportation service. It has to be people who are GPS-equipped, know how frequently the bus stops, know how much fares they're taking. They're taking cash. It can't be, you know, Joe Blow's transportation company because they're just not geared for two things. They're not geared to give us very accurate, very detailed data. And MWRTA are certainly experts in that area. The second thing they're not geared for is they're not geared to connect us to all the places we want to connect. If we want to connect to Framingham MBTA Station, this does that. If we want to connect to Southborough, we can do that, the T. If we want to connect to Franklin, we can do that. That's not in this package and it's not in the first year.
And we're going to have to limit it to that if we're going to try and get through the rest of the articles.
Yes.
The next one, when we look at twenty-four, storm water management. It's not like we have a choice.
There isn't, there isn't. For anybody who's been paying attention over the last five years, the EPA has put, come out with very stringent requirements. We're on a strained river, river basin on the Charles River. We need to maintain our stormwater systems. We need to make sure that illicit connections aren't dumping sewage into the stormwater system. And we need to make sure our drains are clean.
And it's too much money for anything, but we don't have a choice.
And when you say a hundred and a quarter for this, you're like, oh God, didn't we just spend a hundred and a quarter? Yes, we did. And if we don't, the fines will be so onerous...
And also, I think showing the EPA that we are being aggressive on this and proactive on this. Maybe we want to stay on their good side because the point is, being on the bad side could be an absolutely crippling, crippling thing that I don't even want to talk about today.
So we roll into twenty-five, ten thousand dollars for grant writing consultants.
Yeah, this helps us write for grants. One of the biggest benefits to, to the grant writing is we get a lot of funding from the federal government and for the state. One of the examples is the Godfrey Brook. We've gotten lots, millions of dollars really for the Brook to, to repair it and to fix it up. And even the, the EPA requirements, we also get grants for those type of expenditures. So really, this ten thousand dollars is an investment for future...
And it's paid off well in the past.
It has, yes.
To make it easy on twenty-six, this is being passed over. You know, again, the three previous ones were voted favorable by the FinCom. Twenty-six really is Tom Olafland, Chief Olafland's evaluation of civil service versus not. It's being passed over, we'll leave it. Twenty-seven, when we roll into the technology e-grant, at the fall meeting, Town Meeting accepted three hundred thousand dollars. Be earmarked for the school that they submit, and they'll get a six hundred thousand, so sixty-seven percent match. This is them asking for the money. You know, you approved it, said if we get our act together and can submit it, come back and get the money. This is them getting the money. FinCom went favorable on it.
Yep.
Storm water treatment on Article Twenty-eight. Again, this is one where we really don't have a choice. We have to create a retention pond on Dilla Street before the water rushes off into Milford Pond.
Right.
And this is one of those expenditures we actually did get a grant for.
Sixty, forty on that one, too. Your return automatically is...
And this comes under those special circumstances...
Exactly.
Where we say...
We're paying about a third of it.
Yeah, if we take advantage of it in the spring, we pay a third. If we wait till fall, we pay a hundred percent. So out of the three seventy-six, we got to come up with a hundred and...
No, the three seventy-six is the state's part. Or no, I'm sorry, that is the total.
Yeah, but we have to come up with a hundred and fifty of it. So, I mean, it's, we get half of it. So twenty-nine, Fisk Mill Street Dam.
We don't want to cut off all contact with Hawkington and their ability, or Upton, excuse me, and their ability to get into town. As Bill had mentioned earlier, the state is really buckling down on bridges and dams. And Fisk Mill has fallen below what the state standards are and it needs to be addressed. The weird thing about this is that basically, it's two towns that have to worry about the bridge. We're sharing responsibility because technically, we both own the bridge.
Thank God it's fifty feet into Upton.
There's no question. So in this, we're going to be splitting all the expenses for engineering costs and the replacement with Upton, fifty-fifty. This is basically just to get the money for the engineering and it would appropriate that. And as a FinCom, we have basically laid the law down with Scotty that we don't spend one dollar until Upton spends one dollar. We don't spend ten dollars till Upton. And they've committed to do that.
And this is going to be a million dollar...
Yes. Yep.
Give or take, but this is a million bucks. The hundred thousand, we're doing fifty upfront.
This is just for engineering.
It's just the engineering. If all goes well, and it's only a million, oh my God, did I say that? And it's a million, come fall, we will be looking for the five hundred thousand that we need for our half.
Right.
But as Chris says, we made it clear that we're not going to start building halfway and then have to come up with all the money.
Yeah.
So. Article thirty, lights around the police department. And this was totally confusing because people thought this was the lights for the flagpole.
It is not. It's, it's converting existing exterior lighting to LED lighting where there's grant matching from the utility. The payback on our expenditure is about a year and a half.
And again, this is...
It's a no-brainer, right?
This hit under special because the police chief has a grant that reduces our expenditure. So when you look at it and you say, how much are we paying? I mean, we're paying four thousand dollars plus what was left over. I think it came out to like six and change, and we'll get it paid back in a year and a half.
And we had mentioned to the town administrator that he, this, these programs, because he had talked about doing streetlights, whatever. We said, stay as proactive as possible because when you're getting this type of return, as you mentioned, a year and a half? Are you kidding me? Like, and you get grant money, it just, to me, these are the type of things you need to take advantage of because five years from now, you're not, like, these programs aren't going to be around. I'm telling you, they, they're going to, they're going to slowly dwindle with, with the incentives that they're giving you to change over to these LEDs as more and more LEDs become the standards.
You're not paid for lighting either way.
Yeah, exactly.
It's a great investment to cut down on costs.
And as we move, again, that was favorable because it just, why should we pay for the whole thing and not take care of the grant over six months? Come fall, when these lights need to be replaced, we would bear a hundred percent.
Right, it'd be a hundred percent of our pocket, okay.
Then we roll to thirty-one. This was a bit confusing because I've had people say, well, wait a minute. We committed to four years, hundred thousand dollars to upgrade the computer equipment at the police station. Why are we not paying this charge? And the real reason is, we already paid three of them.
Right.
So this year's was paid for at fall Town Meeting. This was just put on as an oversight. This is scheduled to be paid at the fall Town Meeting or requisitioned.
Right.
And that, we have to pay. It's not a question of do we pay the twenty-five grand, but...
We've already committed to the expense.
Right. But it just makes no sense to pay a vendor six months early with our money.
And you know, the computer systems on a public safety side, this system is only going to get harder. When we look at what's happening across the country, we look about, when we look at court mandates, how long we have to retain video footage, whether policemen are wearing body cameras, whether there are cameras set up on the police cruiser, whether they're just cameras for booking or cameras on the cells. We have to retain that video footage. And that video footage, as much as you want to compress it, still takes up a lot of storage space. We're going to be doing computer upgrades for a very long time in public safety.
I think we have to come to grips with the fact that computers are not capital assets.
That's right.
This is not something you buy. I mean, look at the computers at home. Very few people have had them for twelve years.
That's right.
Because they just don't work anymore. They don't keep up with the software.
Yeah.
And when you talk about public safety...
It's as much a telephone, it's as much a calculator, it's as much a...
I mean, you look at what we're putting on the police cars and everything else, it's a lot more expensive now than just buying, you know, a Crown Victoria from the old days.
Right.
But if we really do want to do what's right for the safety of our residents, you maintain your system.
You look at telephone systems. Telephone systems are computers now. They're all voice over internet protocol. They're multifunction capability that can do far more than I'm capable of learning.
I've seen you use a phone, I know.
Yeah, yeah. Besides dialing, no, but the ability to conference, the ability to do so many things is...
We roll, and again, that was recommended and the chief is going to pass it over till fall. Then it's due, then we'll pay it. We turn around and say sludge handling. Lot of money, five million dollars.
It is, but it's a very good investment and the, and the sewer commissioner do a fantastic job over there. And the best proof of that is take a look at what your sewer tax bill has gone up over the last...
I wish I could. My side of town doesn't get sewer.
Yeah, but they've had excellent rate control. The town of Milford, the, the people who, who are lucky enough to have it, you've noticed you haven't had a rate increase in an awful long time.
It's been years and years and years of no rate increase.
Well, the important thing to remember here is, they're not raising or appropriating five point two million dollars. That's already raised.
That's exactly right.
It's already raised through the, through the rates, and it's already raised through the agreements we have with Hawkington.
This comes out of the sewer enterprise fund.
The only reason this is in front of Town Meeting is because in order to create an enterprise fund, the, the way the article was structured to create that enterprise fund, expenditures from the enterprise fund have to go through Town Meeting. This is money that already exists.
Every dollar spent, and when the last articles of the day, it'll be a riot whenever he says, you have to vote on returning thirty-two dollars? Yes, because every dollar spent has to be approved by Town Meeting.
And in one sentence, what this does is that everything that leaves that plant that has to be processed is all done by weight. This cuts down the water, so it weighs less, so we pay less.
Yeah, it just...
So that's really all it is.
And it builds a house. We have to be sensitive to the fact that, okay, we're going to save some money by removing the water from the sewer, the sludge.
Yeah, you're de-wetting sludge.
You're de-wetting so that it weighs less. But the people who live around there, and now you can bring that out into the open...
Even though they're Hopedale people...
Even though they're Hope Town people?
Yep.
There's some Howard Street people there.
There's some Milford people, but no matter what, they really don't want to have an aerosol.
Absolutely.
Over their homes, so they're building a building so that they can at least be, minimize what they can.
Absolutely.
They're trying to be good neighbors.
Snow and ice.
Yeah, unfortunately, we have to pay for snow and ice, and this is the expenditure that went over and above what we had allocated in the budget.
We moved it up to six hundred. We spent seven twenty, so we got to come up with a buck twenty, a hundred twenty thousand.
Right.
And we're going to pay it out of free cash, which is important, that I was very adamant about, that we're not raising and appropriating that, and if we're paying that out of free cash.
But I think this year, I mean, realistically, just as a quick side note, I think all the articles we're doing, we're recommending free cash.
Right.
You know, hats off to our department heads.
Yes.
And it's always funny, because I get the questions all the time, how come you overtaxed us? It's like, excuse me? Well, you had three million dollars left over. I sit there and say, wait a minute, understand that we got a hundred million dollar budget. This year, we're predicting what we're going to spend for the next year. And, you know, when I looked at my school grades, if I hit ninety-seven percent, I thought I did pretty good. Well, ninety-seven percent accuracy means there's three million left over.
Right, and, you know, at the end of the day, even, we are conservative in our approach to budgeting. Money may come in higher, and there are times when we, we may even be able to anticipate money coming in higher, but it's not finalized, whether it's state budget, whether it's, you know, we don't know what the, what the hotels are going to do as an example for business.
That's a million bucks.
Right.
How many bills are going to buy cars?
Yeah, excise tax.
As you mentioned from the state, that's still being decided.
But again, take all that into consideration.
With three percent off.
Yeah.
And we're ninety-seven percent to ninety-eight percent efficient.
And it rolls back to the taxpayer, once again.
I don't know that I'd want to budget any tighter because of what Bill just said.
Right.
If we budgeted ninety-nine percent and we're off by a bit, now we got a problem that we're X million dollars short.
Well, the last, yeah, the last thing you want to do is budget it a hundred, three percent.
Right.
Right, and only be three percent negative.
Yeah, we've seen our neighbors do that. Pick-me-up truck by the parks department.
Yeah, they need a truck from, what was it?
Thirty-four.
It was, it was very old.
Seventies?
Yeah, it was very old truck.
Again, why are we bringing this truck up in the spring?
It is the one they have now.
It's off the road.
It failed inspection.
Yes, that's correct.
And, you know, we got their commitment that we would never see this truck on the road again. You know, if it's being brought forward, because it's an emergency.
I put a little chalk mark on it, I'll know if it's going to run down.
But no, that's always, people ask a question, okay, you go out and buy a truck, because you got to replace it, and then all of a sudden, we see that truck being used.
Unfortunately, that happens too much.
So this time, we're asking, the Capitol Subcommittee is point-blank asking, I want your word that this is not a way of getting it early, that the truck you have now is not streetworthy, then it should be shot, put out of its misery, and we'll go get one that is.
Yeah, and frankly, what it means to me, as a member of the Board of Selectmen, I'm not responsible for parks, but I would tell you that we shouldn't be in a situation where employees are driving vehicles that are not worthy, not worthy to be on the road. What we should be doing is better capital planning, so that this truck would have been taken offline some number of years ago, three or four years ago, prior to getting this point, because I, you know, I just don't want to envision a scenario where employees are driving in trucks where people get hurt, so, or hurt somebody else.
And we went favorable. The next Article thirty-five, the permanent easement for the trail, Reno basically said, if any money is involved, if it's not given to the town, that the trail committee is going to raise it privately.
Friends of the trail.
The friends of the trail, so God bless them, they've done so much already, and they keep on giving.
To me, it's one of the crown jewels of our town, is that trail. I bring my kids on it all the time, it's a fantastic thing, and people from other towns come here, all the time.
Thirty-six, the Woodland School borrowing, that was great news.
Yeah, it was great, as a result of our fiscal management, a result of our department heads, FinCom, and a whole lot of people working very hard, and frankly, beating each other up to get to the point where we are. We've not had overrides, we've not had debt exclusions, we're under our levy capacity, and Milford is an envy of a lot of surrounding communities. When Moody's Investors and other borrowing institutions or rating systems come out and look at us, they say, hey, you know what you're doing. And as a result, the benefit is, you get better bond ratings. This come in much, this came in much lower than we anticipated.
But again, how many other towns can build a school? I mean, we've got a neighborhood, a neighbor town, who's adding five hundred dollars to every house as a debt exclusion. I don't know of many towns that can turn around and say they put together a sixty-one million dollar school, and for ten years, we've been working with the selectmen and everybody else to put money away in stabilization, and here we are, the day came, we didn't have to do a debt exclusion.
We've put money away into stabilization. We've not taxed to the levy capacity. We've not had debt exclusions, and we've returned money to the taxpayer.
And we kept our services, like leaves.
Right.
Yep.
And nobody has to pay.
That's something everybody should be very proud of.
To put your kids on the bus, I mean, you get a heck of a deal from Milford. Is it too much in taxes? Of course, if it was a dollar, we'd say too much.
And we can always do better.
You know, always try and do better.
That's right.
Stacy Elevator. Now that was one.
Yeah, so basically, we got to replace an elevator that is aging. They had an assessment on the elevator. It will likely not pass inspection in the future. You know, we had a staff member get stuck in the elevator, and it had to come out and get repaired. And repairing this elevator is starting to become problematic, because it's, the parts are hard to find, because it is so old. So that's, that's kind of like where we're at now, where we're just going to have to